Double exam on Friday. I need to study for the rest of the day.
Period.
Dexamethasone, no change. About Hashimoto's, Graves' disease. I'm very excited.
Hemotis.
So this is what they look like. She's actually not really conscious. Good morning, everybody. Welcome back to my channel. My name is Peyton. If you guys are new here, it is currently Wednesday, April 12th. And we have just, it's just not a great week here in PA school. It's pretty stressful, but I am starting this video today because we have a double exam on Friday. We have a GU and an endocrine exam this Friday. Both of these courses have been pretty tough. I would argue they're one of my like, they're both some of my least favorite systems. So yeah, these are our second exams for each of these courses. And we have them all on the same day on Friday. So I was like, let's, let's film, let's take you guys through my studying process in just the next few days and see how we do. Honestly, like, I don't feel too confident about it, but it is what it is. So anyways, we are lucky because we don't have much going on in terms of actual school today or tomorrow. I feel like they took into account the fact that we have these two exams. So we really only have class today from 1:00 to 3:00. And then tomorrow, I think I have class maybe from like 2:00 to 4:00 or something. So we get a lot of time to study. I did study last night at the library with some friends, but um, I'm just gonna start the video today. The other thing we had going on was yesterday, we had an OSCE, which if you guys are in PA school, you know what that is. If you aren't, it's kind of like a um, standardized patient event. And basically get to practice being a PA. And we have like all these standardized patients, so they're in like a doctor's office, kind of like, it's like simulated like a doctor's office in our building. And we come and visit them and we don't know anything about them, the chief complaint, anything, until right before we enter the room. Um, and you have to go through, get their whole um, history, medical history, like allergies, medications, all that stuff, family history. And then do the review of systems and do a whole physical exam, diagnose them and give them a treatment plan. Once again, with like no prior knowledge to what's going on, so they're very stressful. So we had that yesterday. I actually think it was one of my better ones, so I felt very good about that. So now that that's over with, I feel like I can kind of focus a little bit and take you guys through the next few days, getting ready for these exams. So it's 9:30 and I'm gonna work for about an hour and a half before I go to the gym. My god, my desk is actually so dusty. It's kind of grossing me out. Um, and yeah, so basically I am trying to finish up the genitourinary before um, 11:00. And that's, so that's the one exam. Um, I've gone through a lot of it. Um, I was going through it last night, but I just wanna go through it again and see it all again. And then um, I will move on to endocrine this afternoon. So for GU, the two main things that we are learning about is the nephritic and nephrotic syndromes, which are basically when the barriers to the kidneys become leaky. That's literally the extent of my knowledge. And yeah, so we're learning about that. There's a ton of different kinds of those um, diseases that present actually the same, but the way you can differentiate them is based off of histology. So I'm trying to like kind of learn the buzzwords for that. I need to go through acute kidney injuries. Um, and then there's just like a bunch of diseases that affect the kidney, like diabetes, hepatitis B, hepatitis C, amyloidosis, lupus. So I need to go through all of those and really nail down like what they do to the kidney. So that's what I'm doing this morning. Really not fun stuff. Then we're gonna go to the gym, get a little workout in, and then really quickly get ready because I have to be at class at 1:00. Alright guys, let's pick a gym fit. It is 10:34. Gonna be honest, I started my period today, so I don't wanna wear anything that like shows the tummy because I'm bloated. We will do the Spartan Strong with, I could do these. Would that look weird? Okay, what do we think? I feel like it's not bad. Oh, you guys are totally sideways, but whatever. Off to the gym, leg day. Honestly, not in the mood for this, but we're gonna make it happen. And when I come back, I'll be happy I did it. Alright guys, I just showered, got ready for class. It is like 75 degrees or something today, which is insane, being like the middle of April in Michigan. So I have this just really comfy white tee on from Abercrombie. This is a little hat from American Eagle. And then we have Abercrombie jeans. And I got these new shoes, like platform um, New Balances. So I'm very excited about these. So this is the OOTD. We have a um, lecture today on the um, male exam, like their um, GU exam. Very interestingly enough, in a week, we have to do, perform a prostate exam on an actual standardized patient. So today is the first lecture into learning how to do that properly. So 12:28, let's pack up. I think I'm just, well, I guess we'll bring both the laptop and the iPad. These. And I'm gonna bring an Alani new energy drink. Okay, we're gonna bring the Dream Float, just because after we are done with this lecture, I need to study for the rest of the day, so. And if I drink these like after 2:00 PM, I cannot sleep. So we're gonna drink this during lecture and let's head off to class. Guys, I'm so excited because I ordered a bunch of stuff from Princess Polly because my friends and I are going to Nashville in, at the end of May for the AAPA conference. But long story short, we're not actually going to the conference part. We're just going for fun basically, but it just lines up perfectly. So I ordered some things and I'm just really excited. I don't know how they're all gonna work, but I think we should start off with the boots. I got a pair of white cowboy boots. Precious. So this is what they look like. Um, this is all from Princess Polly. But oh yeah, I got, okay, I feel like this actually might not work very well because I used to own this skirt in white and it was, it just did not fit me right, like it was too big in the waist, but almost like a little bit short. But we're gonna try it again in the black because it has good reviews. And I thought with that for one night, I could wear it with this little Guns N' Roses graphic tee. I thought this could be cute for like more of like a chill night with either my white boots or my roommate also has red boots, but I might see if those fit. Okay, so then this is for, for one of the nights, we wanted to be a little fancier. Oh, this looks really short, but this is like the cutest like black kind of slip dress. I loved this little detail because like I said, my roommate has red boots, so I thought maybe that could look cute, but no. Oh, I don't know. It looks really short because I don't wanna be like uncomfortable, but we'll try it. And then this is very cute. This is like um, kind of like a bra top basically, but it gave me Nashville vibes because of the sleeves, like they're just so frilly, um, like this. So it's a little itty bitty. The last thing, this is kind of random, not really for Nashville, but I got this gold 444 necklace. I love this actually a lot. Okay. Those, I tried everything on from that Princess Polly haul and I am obsessed with everything. That usually does not happen with me. Like usually there's something that fits weird, but yeah, that was like really good. And I'm being annoying and I'm not gonna show you guys them yet just because I'm planning on doing a vlog when we all go there. And if I showed you guys every single outfit now, then it just wouldn't be as fun. So this necklace is really cute though. It's the 444. So if you guys, I'll link this down below if you guys are interested in that. But I am so annoyed right now. It is 78 degrees outside, like the most stunning day. And the last thing on literally planet Earth I want to be doing right now is studying. But like, I do not know anything for these two exams on Friday. I just took two quizzes that were due that's supposed to like help us like gauge where we're at. Got like a 50% on both and that's like, to be honest, I typically am kind of like that until like the day of the exam is when things really click for me. Um, so I'm not like this, this always happens to me, but it's just like annoying that I have to study so much and it just stinks. I'm just gonna have a little vent, a little complain. I don't like to complain, but it just really stinks because next week it is not nearly this nice and next week I don't have to be studying, so. But on the bright side, this weekend is beautiful and this weekend will be very chill for me because these exams will be over with. So let's look on the bright side. I need to get that in my brain. Okay, so it's all good. Um, I am feeling a little bit sleepy, so that's interesting, but it is 4:56. I'm gonna start studying at 5:00. Do my 50 minute study rule where I study for 50 minutes. I don't know how I'm gonna study for Endo, but we need to figure something out because I don't, I didn't make a quizlet um, for either of these, just because I didn't have the time. Um, so I need to see if maybe somebody else made a quizlet or my friend Paige made like a little um, chart of everything. So maybe I'll start with that. We're gonna, we're gonna see how I'm feeling, but I'm just lazy. But it is what it is. This is PA school, so let's get to it. You guys, studying is not going well. Okay, I got through one lecture, was falling asleep, like literally like it couldn't keep my eyes open. So then I took a 25 minute nap and now I'm on my dinner break because I always take a dinner break between 6:00 and 7:00. So I'm wringing that from like 7:00 to 11:00, literally four hours straight. My brain cells will cooperate because at this rate, I'm failing both of these exams and it's a day away. So we're gonna make dinner. Just, we're doing a taco bowl. Keeping it simple. Dinner is served. My tacos could not be more basic, but like I really should throw some vegetables in here. I really should. But I just, I don't have the desire, the time, or the will. Anyways, we're struggling over here today, but we're, we're gonna eat this quickly, watch some TikToks maybe, and then get to work in a little bit. So far, so good on the studying. Endocrine makes 12 billion times more sense to me than GU, so that's good, I guess. We're learning like about Hashimoto's, Graves' disease, Cushing's disease, Addison's disease, like all those big ones. And I feel like like if you know the physio a little bit, they just make sense. So thank God, something's making sense to me. Um, but yeah, it's, I'm two minutes away from the end of my break, but I'm trying to go till 11:00 today. And then I think I'm gonna wake up and maybe go to like a coffee shop, like maybe go to Starbucks or something tomorrow. Um, before I have class, I think at like 1:45 or something. But anyways, I will take you guys through that with me tomorrow. I'm just thinking out loud right now. So two more hours, then we're gonna go to bed. I'm so tired. Good morning. Happy Thursday. It is 8:30 AM. I woke up at like 7:00 and I'm just so exhausted today. And when I tell you like, I don't think I've ever been this unmotivated to study in my life. Like it is another 80 degree day and sunny here in Michigan and like, I just have no desire to study and it's just hard because I have to study all day, but I really do need to change my mindset because it's just like one more day. Make the most out of it so you pass these exams and so they're over with. So that's what I'm trying to do, even though I'm complaining about it right now. But my goals, I have two more lectures that I need to fully get through for Endocrine, so I'm gonna do that right now. Hopefully take no more than two hours and then review everything for Endo up until I go to class today. And then right after class, I'm gonna get back on my GU grind. And I think I'll spend the most, so we have a study session tonight, but then after my study session, I would imagine I'll be spending most of my time on GU because that's the one that makes the least sense to me. So I'm kind of leaving that towards tonight, kind of like to cram. But that's what's going on. I mentioned that I was gonna go to a coffee shop, but honestly, I'm just not, I was not feeling up to like getting ready and leaving the house. So we're gonna finish those lectures here and like I said, we have class today that'll get me out of the house and then we have my study session with my friends. So that's what's going on. Maybe I can fit in a walk. We'll see how I'm doing, like how I'm feeling. But I would love to go for a walk today because it's just so nice out. I can't believe this weather. It's like summer. Taking a little breakfast break because I am starving, but I would say we're making pretty good progress on Endocrine. We just got word that our GU exam, sorry, I need a bite because I'm so hungry. One second. We just got word that our GU exam is only 20 questions, which I think means you can get very few wrong. That's terrifying me, but maybe that means they're doing like big picture questions, fingers crossed. But anyways, let's eat this really quickly and then get back to work. Okay, you guys, we are going for a walk because you know what? It is a stunning day and my mental health is important. And I just got so much done, studied for like four hours for Endo, so we deserve a walk. And I do have to leave in like an hour to go to class, but whatever. So I'm literally gonna wear these. These are like little shorts, like sweat shorts. This tank top, I actually was gonna look to make sure it's warm enough for this, but I think it is. 76 degrees. Wow, listen to a podcast. Just put my Nikes on. These are the vibes. Cute. I'm very excited. I'm so glad I get to like actually do this today because I was really hoping to at least get some sort of movement in because I won't be going to the gym, but let's go for a walk. That was everything I needed and more, like that. Something about it feeling like summer has just ignited something inside of me. Like I feel just so much happier about life in general. Uh, yeah, so I think it's supposed to like drop into like the 60s, maybe 50s next week, but even that is fine. I just need the 30s and the 40s to go. But okay, I kind of like, that was kind of like a workout. It was like 34 minutes. It is now 12:47 and I need to leave in about 30:00. So what I'm going to do is get changed. So we have, I've mentioned, I think in this video, that we're learning how to do the GU exam for the male. Today, we're gonna go practice that on mannequins. And then we're also gonna learn how to do a bladder catheter, so that's exciting. So it's only I think gonna be like about an hour long, the whole thing. So that's nice because then I'll have more time to study, but we do need to wear scrubs. And since it's like 80 degrees, we're gonna do my hot pink ones and I literally can't wait. And we're gonna, I think even put some mascara on, maybe a little like glow screen moment. So that's what's happening. Let's get changed. Alright, I'm so excited because I used to wear these little headbands all the time in the summer and they just make me feel very happy and like very extra cute when I'm wearing scrubs. But for some reason to me, they're more of like a summery thing to wear. I think it's because they're like a summery design. It's like a bunch of flowers, but I'm gonna wear one today because my hair is greasy. Okay, sorry, you can probably like hear the air blaring right into the um, camera, but anyways, I'm in a great mood. We're gonna head off to class and I'm in a group with two of my besties, Emily and Jill. And yeah, we're gonna do our thing. Um, I probably won't be able to film it, especially because of the sensitivity of what we're doing today. But yeah, I, I hate when I have to explain what I'm doing rather than showing, but this is just one of those situations where I don't think I need to show you guys. You know what I'm saying? Okay. Alright, catch you guys later. A little bit later, came home and just did some studying. Honestly, I had some lunch dinner. I had a little taco bowl. Um, and now I've changed into my favorite little sweat shorts. I was wearing the pink ones earlier. Now we've got the green ones on, my little Nike, or these are not Nike, New Balance, my new New Balance shoes, this little top and then a new headband because my hair is so greasy. It's really kind of concerning. But anyways, we are off to a study session. I will take you guys with, we'll film it. Um, we're all feeling pretty horrible about this one, but I know personally, I'm not on my A game. So anyways, let's head off and do some learning. Let's learn GU and Endo. Saying hi to the crew. Hello, hello. Emily, how do we feel? What is, what is blood coming out in your sputum called?
Hemotis. I didn't say hematitis.
That definitely didn't happen. So you have a patient and they have the disease, men too. And then you notice, they, they come into you because they're like, I get these really weird like spells almost. Like sometimes when they like bend over, they like get extremely high blood pressure, they get a headache, they start sweating profusely. So you're like, okay, I think I know what's going on here. So you're gonna get their urine and you're gonna measure their methanophyrins. Okay? And then you're like, oh my God, these are actually pretty high. So you come to your diagnosis. Do you have any idea what it is?
Phenochromatosis.
Yes, like. Feochromocytoma.
Phenochromocytoma.
Yeah.
I think my mom sent you a picture. We have a birthday party.
You have a patient that's coming in because they are having some muscle weakness. They have noticed this like wound on their arm that it just hasn't healing right, like it's just taking a long time. They've also noticed that they've gained some weight. So you're like, that's so weird. So you do an, so you do an exam and you notice they have purple strayer. And you also look on the posterior side and they have a buffalo hole. If you were going to do an exam or if you were gonna do a diagnostic test on them to determine this is what you think it is, what would you do?
Dexamethasone suppression.
Correct. Yes. And what would you see?
The cortisol levels.
Correct.
So normally you do dexamethasone, no change up the dose. There's only a slight decrease in cortisol then with the Cushing's disease due to the pituitary adenoma. The adrenal um, like cancer and the ectopic one will not have it.
Okay, is, how would you, how would you treat this?
It's the block, the cortisol synthesis, so it's gonna be the metatia.
Yep. Talk us through, um, I don't know, I just pushed a button. Um, like normal non-radioactive iodine versus radioactive iodine and when it's being, different ones are being taken up.
This is hard. Like I guess this is, I've kind of interpreted it a little differently. You use one to treat like the other. So basically, well, you can do radioactive iodine testing where you administer the radioactive iodine. You come in and your patient's wearing sunglasses and she takes off her sunglasses and her eyes are like this. What is this called?
Anybody? You have a patient come in, they said like, I feel like these couple bumps in my neck. So you're like getting a history and he tells you that he had um, a feochromocytoma removed two years ago. Does this give you any clue to what's going on?
You know.
Okay, but then you do a little biopsy um, of this nodule and you're gonna see amyloid deposition and C cell hyperplasia.
Yeah, C cell. She's a C seller.
So what is, what is this?
I don't remember. Medullary, thyroid carcinoma?
Yes, but what is going to be increased um, related to the C cells?
I don't know. I don't know.
Calcitonin.
See, calcitonin.
This is my study method, Peyton and Paulers. This is my bedroom at home and I put diseases in different spots because I can remember where I put them and then I can remember the diseases. That one was easy. Where's my apartment? This is my bed. That's the front door. Okay.
Scared. No, I'm scared.
This person has an autosomal recessive disease and it's an enzyme deficiency in the cortical synthesis pathway. The symptoms that this person came in for is that their genitals are ambiguous.
They are ambiguous.
Oh, you got it. I know it.
I do know it.
And they have a lot of hair on their face, this girl. And she's like, I just don't know what I have and I'm really concerned about it. What does she have?
Classic adrenal hyperplasia.
Classic congenital adrenal hyperplasia. Yes. How would you diagnose them? What will they have an increase in? You basically like what I, the symptoms I said, what is it increasing? What are those called? It starts with an A.
Oh, androgens.
Yes, androgens. Okay, and how would you treat her?
Um, hydro.
Yes, yes, hydrocortisone. And is it, and the other one too? So is it classic with the flu? Because it's more severe?
Algastrone deficiency.
That was beautiful, Paige.
Okay, so you are in the ER. Okay, and a homeless woman comes in. It's the winter. I'll paint the scene. She tells you that she has a history of hypothyroidism, but because she's homeless, she can't pay for it. So, well, she's actually doing really not well. So yeah, no, she's actually not really conscious. Yeah, so you took her vitals. She has, um, her temperature is less than 85 degrees.
Oh, so you need a special thermometer?
Sure. Sure. Um, do you know what she has first of all? And what are you gonna see on labs?
Um, so she's, you're gonna have decreased T4, T3, and then increased TSH.
Like electrolytes. This is her.
I have hypoglycemia?
Yep, sodium and.
Uh, potassium.
No chlor.
Oh, correct.
Are they high or low? Okay, how are you treating her? This is the important part. It's all low. But you're also gonna do hydrocortisone and IV level.
As I said, is that the most part? Is like the IV level, right? This is Addison's disease, primary adrenal deficiency. Antibodies against what? 21 something? 21 hydroxylase is also the issue with my, uh, my congenitals. Yes, so it's just, I think it's like maybe an issue.
Genital adrenal hype, right?
Right.
One more time. I learned how to zoom.
And they show what I actually look like so that they know I don't look like that.
Always worry. What, what are you guys? A person comes in with a his, you take, you do your little past medical history, you do all your interview questions. And they said that they had like a thyroidectomy um, a couple years ago.
Parathyroid gland as well?
No.
No, no, parathyroids are intact. Okay.
No, they're not.
Wait, oh, they're not. Oh, okay.
Oh, this person has complaining of like, kind of like a tremor and like they have spasms in their throat, they said. That's what they describe it as. You do some physical exam and when you put, well, first you try to get vitals. When you try to put the blood pressure cuff on, it like spazzes. Yeah.
Is it Trusso's sign?
Yeah, that is positive actually. And then the other sign is like, oh, yep. Yeah, you give a little tap. Their, their deep tendon reflexes are like, ow, whack. They're crazy.
Hypocalcemia.
Oh, for sure. Okay. Yeah, but why do they have hypocalcemia?
The hypothyroidism.
Yeah, because of the surgery. What other lab findings will you find? Specifically like referring to like phosphate and calcium. I mean, not calcium.
Well, you're gonna have low calcium.
Yeah.
So parathyroid hormone.
What about phosphate?
Thank you, Emily, so you have high phosphate.
Yes, you are. So how do you treat this little guy?
You're gonna give um, um, some calcium.
Specifically what form of calcium? It's IV calcium gluconate.
So wait, you can get some?
You do a little DEXA, right? Because someone comes in with low bone mineral density. Okay, perfect.
Is this from the bone lecture?
Yes, it is.
Perfect, the one that I did do.
Okay, you're trying to figure out if they have osteoporosis or osteopenia. What is the diagnostic criteria?
Uh, is there like a 2.5 in there?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all, like that's all I know.
Okay.
I'm getting a negative 2.5.
For which one?
I would think for osteoporosis.
Yes. And then osteopenia would have?
Um, greater than that.
Perfect. Yes. Yes, so what do you do to treat? Perfect. And what, what else could you do that would prevent rank L from binding to rank?
I'm sorry. No idea.
Okay.
The um, DEXA, the monoclonal antibody.
Denazumab. I feel like they might ask about that too.
Because it bind, inhibits rank binding to rank L, so like mimics it. And so since rank L is stimulated, there's no reabsorption.
Yes, yes. Tell me why women are more likely to have. Yeah. Perfect. Good morning. It is a beautiful Friday. I'm actually in a very good mood considering the fact that I'm on my way. Good morning. It is a beautiful Friday. I'm actually in a very good mood considering the fact that I'm on my way to take two exams. But you know, it is what it is. I did some last minute review this morning. It's eight twenty, we gotta head out of here. I actually, we have the new class coming today for their pre-orientation event, so I tried to look somewhat cute. No makeup is on, but whatever. So that's at like twelve-thirty-ish, so my friends and I are just gonna go out for lunch after our exams and then we'll just come back cuz it's right at um, like our school, like where we have our classes and stuff. So didn't make sense really to go back and forth a million times, so that's why I look somewhat presentable. But I think it's gonna be a really good day. It's gonna be a nice day again. It feels like summer and it's making me so happy, but I know it's gonna go away. But I just wanna soak it up while I can. So no matter what happens today with these exams, I'm gonna have myself a good weekend, period. Like there's, that's just it, that's what's going on. So yeah, I'll let you guys know how these exams go. It is a while later. It is actually Saturday, like late at night. I am just editing this video and I realized I never told you guys how the exams went because I was just so happy for them to be over with. I went right into my weekend. They actually went pretty well. Um, I definitely, I was like the only one in the class, I think, that thought genitourinary was harder than Endo. And genitourinary was the first one we took. It was twenty questions and I got a seventeen out of twenty, so I think that's an eighty-five. But I felt so bad about that, like turning it in, I was like, you know, there's a chance that I failed it, but we didn't. And then with Endo, felt so much better about it and then uh final score, I got a ninety-four percent. Very happy with them both, very happy that that week is done with. I honestly think that might have been our hardest little section uh for the semester now. Like we'll have finals, but they're like individual exams and not like a double exam like we just had. So anyways, I'm very happy about that. I've had a very good weekend so far and just wanted to say thank you guys so much for watching. I hope you guys enjoyed and I will see you in my next video.